I've never done it.
Yeah, I don't know about me.
The picture's horrible.
But they have your child.
Okay, all meeting in order and Beth fled to the league.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Cluckler.
President.
Alderman Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Here.
Snow.
Present.
Babel.
Present.
Dowd.
Here.
Doan.
Present.
Sabatka.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any requests in the audience? Evening. Mr. Mayor. For the record, please.
David Sigel. Mayor would like to address the council.
Sure.
Two people, uh, individually. I owe Mrs. Blackert a big apology. I said things two weeks ago that at the time I was upset with the ex-mayor when he's laughing at me. And I want to apologize to you. There's some things I said that weren't true and I didn't mean to lie about them. Each time I visited this lady, I think three or four times, she was very professional about it. There wasn't no upset with anybody. And, uh, when I left, pardon me, when I left, the questions I had, uh, as far as I'm concerned, were true. And I want to apologize to you publicly. Mr. Mayor, I owe you an apology.
Oh, good.
Uh, last week, same meeting. It was not about the trailer court. I won't get into that. Everybody here knows what's going on out there. But I, at the same time that night, uh, I mentioned your name and I visited you three or four times. At no time did this mayor tell me what to do or not to do. He gave me advice on, on, different kinds of advice. He didn't say you should see a lawyer or do this. It was more or less just say call about it and see what comes up. And I, again, I apologize to both of yous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
My name is Ron Timmons and my question is, I live at the corner of Third Avenue and Sixth Street. Are they going to redo those streets this year?
It's on the agenda for tonight.
Pardon me?
It's on the agenda for tonight, but it's not on this show tonight.
If you, if you can hold off, you'll be able to hear the, the short story and a long, a long sentence.
The weatherman's lie, the weatherman's lie, you were telling me?
Might be, might be.
I'll, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't see anyone here from the chamber. Uh, you go with the consent agenda, please.
Okay, consent agenda, item number one, approval of the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 city council meeting and approval of bills as presented.
We have a motion to accept the.
I move to make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion's been, uh, made by Alderman Wangland, uh, seconded by Alderman Sabatka. Consent agenda, we have roll call, please.
Alderman Snow.
Aye.
Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Aye.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Aye.
Okay, next topic is resolutions. Can you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution 2021-861, approving and ratifying the animal control agreement.
I make a motion to approve, uh, resolution 2021-861.
One second. Motion made by, uh, Alderman Snow, seconded by, uh, uh.
Dowd.
Steve Dowd. Well, turning around there, yeah. Like remember those. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Aye.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Aye.
Resolution 2021-862, authorizing waiver of competitive bidding and acceptance of proposal for RBNW amphitheater improvements.
I make the motion to approve resolution 2021-862.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Alderman Babel, seconded by Alderman Snow. Any questions? No discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Doan.
Yes.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yep.
Snow.
Aye.
Babel.
Aye.
Chief Administrator Blacker, report, please.
Yes, I have a report of an emergency repair that was, um, necessary, um, for two RAS pumps and two WAS pumps at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $39,166. And if anybody wants to know technically what they are, they can ask Ed.
Is work already been done or to be done?
We've, we've, um, done the purchase order on that, so we had to go ahead and, and get stuff ordered.
Okay. We have a motion to make these, uh, the snow action.
A second.
Motion made by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Sabatka. No discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Yes.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Aye.
Okay, the second item, um, takes a little bit of explanation. First of all, I was under the impression because of how the state of Illinois put out a press release and notification to cities that had applied for the Rebuild Illinois grants. And we were not awarded. So later I've been speaking with Matt Hanson, went back, did some checking, he sent me. And the grants that they sent us out, although they said Rebuild Illinois, were not the Rebuild Illinois public infrastructure grants that we had applied for, for the rebuilding of Third Avenue and Avenue A. So that's good news. They have not, we are not out of the running. Those have not been awarded yet. However, the bad news is, is that what we understand from DCEO, that those have only been alphabetized and are sitting in boxes in a hallway, so they're not going to award those until third quarter. Now, our intention was to bid out Dixon Avenue and Third Avenue at the same time. And we're still waiting for the final okay on Dixon Avenue from IDOT because that is a federal aid project. So, but it should be done literally any day that where we could bid out Dixon Avenue. And the engineering and the bid has been ready to go on Third Avenue for a long time. Uh, the engineer's estimate on that is a million and a half dollars and that's what our grant, that's what our ask is for the grant. So what I can tell you is, if we were to get the grant, we will not know until July, August, or September. If they were to award and announce in July, there is hope that we might be able, might be able to get it at least corded out before winter. However, knowing DCEO, you know, it could be September. And by the time you get grant paperwork started, even if it was August, by the time we got the grant paperwork going and put the bid out, it probably wouldn't start until spring. Now, what I can tell you in order for you to try to make some kind of a educated decision on this, is that there's approximately 300 grants sitting down there. There's $25 million worth of grants that we've got a chance of getting. And the Third Avenue is the one that's a million and a half. The, the Avenue A one is a 4.9 million dollar grant. So I'd say our odds are, and plus, um, the engineering was done already for Third, so that scores it a little bit higher. Willa Hoffman has even said that we have a very excellent grant application in. I can't guarantee you guys that we'll get a million and a half of that 25 million, especially with there being that money down there. But what I'm afraid of is that we don't wait, we go ahead and bid it and then we'll get the grant and we will have lost the money. We can't get the grant if we go ahead and bid it out and start it. They won't backtrack on that. So now you guys are left with the undesirable decision to make as to what you want to do. We have the million and a half sitting there. However, it is going to take almost all, if you look at the last treasurer's report, sorry. Most of everything that you see on your treasurer's report that's sitting in the general fund is the street, is, is the street departments. That's the money that we've set aside to do that road work. So if we do that, that will deplete almost all the money that we have in there, available money that we have in there. And I just hate not taking a chance at the grant. But as you guys' decision, we've put those poor people off Third, we put them off last year because of COVID and now we're putting them off this year. So, you know, and we'll, we can get word out, we could probably do a mailing to those people that live on Third to let them know what's going on. Um, we know how bad that road is. Trust me, we know how bad it is. Um, so you guys get to roll the dice and see what you want to be here.
What else does that million and a half use for? Use the extra? What else?
If we got the grant?
No, before, I mean, you said if we go ahead and.
It's money that we've been saving of our, our, our one cent money that we pay to do the roads with. We've been saving it and not spending it and putting it away intentionally. Um, so we have, we'll have money to do that road whether we get a grant or not.
Okay.
But if we get the grant, my goodness.
Right.
You know.
If, if, we don't have to use it on Third Avenue, we're going to use it on the next project.
We've got three blocks of Fourth Avenue that are just as bad.
We have a two-year wait to accumulate.
So the grant is specific to Third?
Yes.
That's the only thing.
You have to do it.
If we start the Third Avenue project and they call us up and say you've got the grant money, but we already expired it, okay, goes to somebody else.
It's going to go to another city.
So theoretically, we could, right?
Well, the only, the only thing that anybody on Third Avenue can hold good is the fact that we're not going to go build another road before you go on a road.
Well, Dixon Avenue. But that's a federal aid project, which is different.
That's a whole different story.
When Dixon Avenue gets built, that's going to be paid for with federal dollars. Um, we only have to pay 20% of that and that has been scheduled for several years. So that's coming out of a different pot of money. So, I mean, what, what you're saying is we're not going to take that million and a half regardless and go build some other road. Third is the next one to get built with that money sitting there. I don't know. We'll know shortly.
Yeah, well, may, we'll be making a decision on that, but in the next month or two.
On which one?
On Third Avenue. Whether, well. Whether we proceed or we don't proceed, that, that.
Well, the thing is, is that we're, we'll be ready to bid out, so we kind of need to make the decision.
How long does it take actually to get out, to get through all the proceedings for bidding out?
Oh, it's going to take a good month and then you usually give them another month to start.
Okay, so then we're looking at late September possibly this week for the grant to come through, right?
Oh, no. No, if we get the grant, if they announce in July, then we take them, you figure, you just figure a month for the bidding process, whether it's three weeks or not, three weeks, a month. And then we could, but we couldn't do that bid until we had all the signed agreements with DCEO for the grant. Now, that's where it gets fun because it can take two months to get that paperwork, to get DCEO to have them get us that paperwork. If, if this was not, if this was Avenue A alone, because we don't have complete engineering done on that, because it's a higher dollar project, you know, I would be like, let's just go ahead and do it if that was the one that we were planning on doing. But this is a lower amount, I think we have a better shot at it and we know it's a really good grant application. It hits part of the tip, it hits part of the opportunity zone, it has all the bells and whistles. No, I, I know Third Avenue is in very, very distraught and my, I mean, my opinion is, is of course, anytime we can get grant money to do a road, we can save the other money we have to do another road project. It's beneficial because now we, we, we repair two, uh, areas within the city that are back. And I know Third Avenue, I mean, last, last year it was supposed to be the start of the project and unfortunately COVID pushed that way behind schedule. And now we have this opportunity with the grant to where, you know, we can do two projects if we get them. There's no guarantee we're going to get it, but, um, there's a good chance we can. And I'm all in favor of if, if we can get two projects done and using the 1.5 we have set aside for Third Avenue, let's get the grant money to do Third. Now we've got that additional project we can report. It's a tough call because again, the, the street is in bad shape. It's been in bad shape for years and, uh, we've kind of patched it in, but I personally, I, if we spend that money now to move forward with Third and we get this grant awarded, we just waste it all the time and energy on that, you know, that we could have gotten this grant for. Um, I, I, it's, we've waited kind of this long to get it done. I think this is a little bit extra to wait, I, to me, is valuable for the money that we're going to save.
I agree with Alderman Snow.
As long as the people on Third Avenue could be patient, just wait a little longer.
Like you said.
Yeah, we can, yeah, that can be done very easily. Explaining it why it's, it's, the wait is going to be there.
Right, yeah.
If we wouldn't have had COVID in the way, we would already have this project done and we wouldn't be here to talk about it. But we didn't have this grant opportunity back then. Now we have this opportunity. So I think it's in the best interest for other projects within the city, um, to kind of back off just a little bit. And it will get done whether, if we don't get the grant, excuse me, if we don't get the grant, then of course, it's going to delay when we get it done. But, you know, at least it can be corded out, um, and be ready for spring to come in and start putting by twos down, so.
Okay, I mean, I don't think we're taking any vote or anything, right?
Well, what, what I need is direction.
Do anything?
What I need is direction. Because if, let's say next week IDOT gives us approval on Dixon Avenue, if I know, I, I can go ahead and get that bid out. I just need to know which bids to let, whether I'm doing Dixon Avenue and Third or whether I'm just doing Dixon Avenue. Well, I think if we're going to wait, we can't pre-bid it until we find out if we get the grant. But we can't pre-bid it. Right, so. If, if, if we're going to wait for the grant money to see, then we, we're not going to bid it. We would just bid out Dixon Avenue. That's what I, I would recommend.
Okay, now I ask for a motion to authorize a city administrator to bid out Dixon Avenue separately.
So we're.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion from Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Wangland to, uh, direct the city administrator to bid out Dixon Avenue separately.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We have roll call, please.
Alderman Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Aye.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Aye.
So then do we also need to do anything about, um, making sure that the people on Third Avenue, um, get the mailings out to understand it?
I will grab the letter and let them know what the current status of it is. That hopefully work will start this fall, but if not, it'll be next spring. We are going to get you a new street, I do promise you that. We're going to get you a new street. We are.
Any correspondence?
Thank you for coming in. At least I know more than I did anyway.
Anything from our city attorney that you think you have warmed up?
Nothing.
Engineer's not here, any from our department is? Okay. Ward one, Alderman Wangland.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Alderman Palmer.
I also have nothing.
Alderman Snow.
Yes, I'm seeking approval to accept the bid for the 2021 to 2024 lawn maintenance awarded to Burger Brothers Trucking and Excavating Incorporated, 901 East 18th, Rock Falls, pending a receipt of all necessary paperwork. And I'm going to make that into a formal motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Sabatka to accept the bid of Burger Brothers for our mowing contract. Any discussion?
Will the, will the city mow it then? This will be for our, uh, land that, uh.
Let's say our abandoned and vacant properties, not the parks and everything, not the parks or the city-owned property, but the abandoned and vacant.
Right, the ones that we end up having to take care of, but they're like in bankruptcies or walkaways from. We, we don't have title to it, so it's not really city property, but we have to mow it to keep them available.
We, we're ticketing, we're, they get a ticket and then these people go mow it. And then we recoup that cost of the mowing through the ticket, no.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Aye.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Aye.
Alderman Babel.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Well, one of the, somebody who's written, when you walk down a handblock and there's an hour, I think it's Avenue E. You can't sit two cars down that road at the same time because of the foliage and all of the trees. What do we do?
Administrator Blacker.
Who fixes the foliage?
Well, who, who, who gets rid of the stuff where you can drive on the road on the one side, you know? So you can't get two cars about right?
Well, Avenue E, actually, that, where it comes to the dead end. We've still got the barricade up, right?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the road in front. Where if you pull down that driveway after you go to Avenue, we might have to turn on that. That road is awful. It's getting a little bad at night and morning. If we have any to put that.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to you about that. I can talk to you about that.
Something needs to be done, doesn't it? Grab your car up if you've got an accident car and you're driving along the road and you've got two cars down.
Are we on roll call vote?
No.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know.
Yep, yep, I can talk to you about that. We can go over that. Yep, you bet.
Anything else?
The love light tree's starting to look pretty nice. Then just like that, nothing else for word for.
Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's report. Uh, first I'd like, uh, make the appointment of, uh, Alderman Babel and Jeff Kendall to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term through 2000. Excuse me, I have to, quite a bit of previous presentation stuff.
The planning and zoning industrial development are two different terms in the playbook. Planning and zoning is only four years, industrial development's five.
Okay.
Oh, I see what yours, yeah. Yep, that's right. Planning and zoning's four.
So we're not appointing, you're both not going to zoning and planning?
Casey and Jeff Kendall to Planning and Zoning Commission. In four years.
To accept Casey Babel and Jeff Kendall to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion made. Made by Alderman Sabatka and seconded by Alderman Snow. Any questions? Timmons, roll call, please.
Alderman Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Recused. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong one, we're all kind of messed up today. Yes.
Babel.
I'll keep my glasses on.
Dowd. Doan.
Yes.
Sabatka.
Motion's, I don't know which one started this, leaning towards me or.
It's contagious.
Okay, I'd also like to, approval of the reappointment of Alderman Snow to the Industrial Development Commission, um, this date through 2026.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Sabatka, seconded by Alderman Babel. Any question, discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Palmer.
Yes.
Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Recused.
Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Yes.
Doan.
Yes.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Okay, number three, I'd like approval of the appointment of Jessica Devers as Third Ward Alderman for a two-year term to fill the remainder of my term as Alderman.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion made by Alderman Palmer, seconded by Alderman Wangland. Any questions, discussion?
When will she be seated? When will she be seated? Be sworn in and sweated at the next council meeting?
Uh, I think she'd come in before the Congress.
Alderman Wongland.
Yes.
Snow.
Aye.
Babel.
Aye.
Dowd.
Yes.
Doan.
Aye.
Sabatka.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Long will seeking approval of the appointment of Wayne Squire as a city clerk, uh, for a four-year term. Any motion on that, please? Yes, receiving no, are, no motion to, uh, approve the appointment. We'll move on to the next, uh, item. Our appointment of, uh, standing committees and commissions. Uh, Alderman Sabatka has requested it. I pull the, uh, Queens Fire Committee and look at that as a individual item, so we'll move on, everything except that, uh, to accept the committees and commissions that are presented on all this that we have.
With the exceptions that I gave you of the dates and times?
Yes.
Yes.
We would not be using the time for the tourism and utility committee. They'll continue at their old meeting time until, so to speak, we get approval of those committee members.
And the tourism and what, which other committees?
Utility.
The tourism utilities has a number of citizens that we have on that. We have to make sure that they get like the visiting times.
Make a motion and approve the standing committees as presented, with the exception of the two committees until we can get the times isolated. I'll second that.
And also the exception of the police and fire commission.
Right, we'll deal with that later. Alderman Whangland? Alderman Snow made the motion, seconded by Alderman Sabatka. Any questions?
Alderman Babel?
Aye.
Dowd?
Aye.
Doan?
Aye.
Sabatka?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Wonglen?
Yes.
Snow?
Aye.
Okay, we'll bring up the appointments to the police fire committee. I'd like a motion to accept the members of the police fire committee. Okay, see, we have no motions on accepting the police fire committee members. So we'll move on. Anything that anyone had to add before we adjourn for the evening?
I'll make the motion we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Just me to get the adjourn? I want to make sure we adjourn.